Good morning. Welcome to the Blue Earth County Board of Commissioners meeting for March 21st, 2023. As you can, please stand up and say a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we have our agenda review, Bob?
Mr. Chair, there are no changes to the agenda today.
I'll move the agenda.
I'll second.
Got a motion, a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose the same, passes. All right, ask for a recess.
I move to recess for Economic Development Authority meeting.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose the same. All right, we will call to order our Economic Development Authority meeting. Of course, on the agenda is the agenda review. You have a motion?
I'll move it.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose the same. On, next is the minutes of March 20th, of March 7th.
I'll move the minutes.
Second.
All right, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose the same. All right, Nancy, we'll get you, come on up here and we've got a developer owner supportive housing and shelter project.
Good morning, Nancy.
Good morning, Nancy. Chair and commissioners, we just wanted to bring before you today a proposal for you to review for a developer owner of a supportive housing project, and that was our supportive housing and shelter combination project. And as you know, you have already allocated $2 million in ARP funding for the capital cost to address housing needs. And we did have communications with our local shelters, shelter guests, individuals who are unsheltered, and we've gathered information on the need in our community, and so we've gone out for requests for qualifications to have a developer owner put together this project for us, and we've kind of outlined the project again for you, really looking at some congregate shelter beds and non-congregate, so we're looking at about 50 to 60 units there to support the homeless who are in our community, specifically singles in our community. But we are looking at having some space for some families as well, and then moving in, moving that process through to allow them to have supportive housing. So we're constructing another 40 units of one, two, and three-bedroom units that will be joined together with that shelter project. And we're really hoping that this will expand the shelter needs in our community, and looking at a 24/7 shelter, having a place, a warming shelter when the weather gets really cold, having a space where we can backfill and make sure everyone has a warm place to be. So just looking at trying to expand some of that, and then make sure that we have the support services needed for them as well. And so then we did get two proposals for developer owners that came in. Both of them were highly qualified. We had a proposal from the Southwest Minnesota Housing Partnership, and then we also had one from Trellis Company. And so both of them are working in our community right now, and so we did go through a process to compare those proposals, and we did look at different things in there as far as their qualifications, previous experience, timeline for getting the project going and started, and hopefully funded, and then making sure that they would be having a process to include communities who are most impacted, and that we definitely be the homeless in our community, and getting input from them on the project. So one of the key factors in us looking at recommending Trellis Company was that they not only are, would be willing to be the developer and the owner, they also are a management company, and management was a key factor in this because we do have a number of supportive housing projects right now, and when we don't have the same old manager as the owner, we have found that they have difference in philosophies, and so a lot of our most hard to serve are not being served. And so we did want to, as much as possible, find a developer that would also be able to manage the property and have those same values of making sure we're serving the hardest to serving our community. And Trellis Company was one of those that could do that. The other key factor with Trellis was that they could do the project this year, so we wanted them to go into, apply for a low-income housing tax credit this summer, and they are able to do that with us. So they have their team already in place, they have a development team that has an architect that has a lot of good work behind them already, and they also had a lot of experience in shelter or supportive housing projects that had 100% of the units being supportive housing. Many of the projects you see in our community right now, there is a handful of supportive housing units in the tax credit projects, so this would be a different perspective, and they come with that experience as well. They also had a plan for how they would be working with communities most impacted and be working with us on that. They were definitely willing to be a complementary partner to the process, and just having their team together was really key for us to do that. So we're bringing this proposal to you and asking you to adopt a resolution approving Trellis Company as a developer owner, and I guess I would open it up to you for any other questions you might have on the two developers.
Refresh my memory on which other, they have another project here, me and Cato already, right?
They do, they have walnut towers.
Okay, yeah.
So they purchased walnut towers, and then this fall they'll start the rehab on that building.
And they, were they at a work session one time talking about that, or was it?
Yes, they were re-supported a tax credit for them to go ahead to rehab the project.
That's right. All right.
That's the only comment I had, Mr. Chair. I would move approval.
I'll second it.
Got a motion, a second, any discussion?
Great program, thank you.
Yeah.
Anything we can do to help our homeless and our lower income is a good thing around town. I think people would be surprised how many people are homeless and living in their cars, and it's mind-boggling, but thank you very much.
Sure. Some of those that you do see represent homelessness, but there's so many more that are hidden that you don't even see, so.
Absolutely.
We need work to address all of the.
Thank you for this work. Got that. All in favor?
Aye.
And opposed? It passes.
Thank you, Nancy.
Yeah, thanks, Nancy.
Thanks, Nancy.
And I need a motion to adjourn.
So move, second.
A motion, a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose the same, it passes. And we will call our meeting back to order, and we will be going into planning and zoning. John?
Good morning, John.
Good morning, commissioners.
I get to start this out with a little introduction first, I guess.
Mark and George, good morning.
All right. Next, planning and zoning staff are here to present their action items. This is a public hearing. Public comment will be allowed in just a moment, and I'd ask the planning and zoning staff to please introduce themselves for the record and to introduce the items before the board. Go ahead, John.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. John Considine, Senior Land Use Planner. First item this morning is PC 0523. It is a request for review and approval from the Gross Revocable Family Trust for an interim use permit to operate a short-term rental unit in the shoreline of Lake Washington. The property is zoned rural residence and located within the shoreline of Lake Washington, located in the northwest quarter of the northwest quarter of Section 20, Jamestown Township. The request was first heard at the February 1st, 2023 Planning Commission meeting. The applicant was present, and he stated that he had concerns with attendees that may not be actual neighbors. He stated he has had the short-term rental for five years already and has not had any problems so far. Four individuals addressed the Planning Commission with concerns. Their concerns included the following: Is there sufficient off-street parking? The street that provided access is not a public right-of-way, it is privately-owned property. The applicant damaged the drainage system along the road and added rock for parking on neighboring property in 2017. Although required to repair the drainage and remove the rock as a condition of the denied variance in 2017, the drainage issue and rock remain. Occupant capacity of the short-term rental, and that the applicant had not been a good neighbor. The Planning Commission tabled the item to the following month and requested more information from the Minnesota Department of Health on their occupancy standards, parking, and the private road. At the March Planning Commission meeting, staff presented a summary of the discussion, which led to the request being tabled from the February 2023 Planning Commission meeting. Staff presented the report and the requested information. Staff summarized that with five rooms occupied for sleeping purposes, sewer service provided to the property, parking to accommodate four vehicles while still leaving room for a boat-trailer that could easily access the property without a shuffling of vehicles onto Fairview Lane impacting that road's functionality, and with the Minnesota Department of Health's guidance on occupancy, staff recommends a maximum occupancy of 15 occupants. At the March Planning Commission meeting, three individuals addressed the Planning Commission with concerns. Their concerns included the following: Structural integrity of the deck, maximum occupancy related to sleeping at the property versus visiting the property, the conditions of the 2017 denied variance and approved after the fact conditional use permit, parking, and finally, potential for future violations on the property. The applicant was present and stated he did not agree with everything that was presented by staff, but acknowledged the reasoning behind it. Members of the Planning Commission discussed the proposal. Members of the commission expressed concerns with the rental capacity, sufficient off-street parking, and the potential unresolved conditions of the 2017 variance and conditional use permit actions. Following the discussion, the Planning Commission voted for in favor and one opposed to forward a recommendation of approval of the request to the county board based on the conditions and findings prepared by staff. The board action for this item is passage of the resolution based on the recommendation of the Planning Commission. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
All right. At this time, we will open for a public comment on PC 0523. The hearing is being recorded, so please state your name and address for the record, and please limit your comments to five minutes. This has been extended from our normal three minutes, and a five minutes will be a hard stop, so you will be shut down at five minutes. I'll ask Mr. Meyer to keep time, and he will give a one-minute warning, basically, as to if your time is up. So is there anybody wishing to comment on PC 0523?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm Jerry Calheim. I live at 4208 Fairview Lane. Fairview Lane is a very small street, it's really not a street, it's the old farm lane going up to the old farmhouse. We have 12 lots, 11 of them are built on, plus the old farmhouse, which was the original, I believe it was called at one time, the George Washington Farm. And we have, like I say, just a very, very small lane going up there, and very quiet. In, in talking to the staff last fall, I was told that Mr. Gross would not be able to get a permit because he had an outstanding violation, and I understand that if you have an outstanding violation, you cannot get a permit. He has an outstanding violation. The drainage and yard and trees planted, have not been planted as they were supposed to have been done under the first agreement. Debbie James, before she passed, had tried for years to get Mr. Gross to repair this part of the, of the property that she owned. This area had been turned into a large parking lot, and still remains as a parking lot. In talking to the staff this year, I was told that they did not know that this was a violation, and if the staff had known that this was a violation, we would not be here today, because it would not have been approved. Secondly, Attachment 9, Findings and Facts, states that the proposed use will not be injurious to the use and enjoyment of other property in the immediate vicinity of the, of the proposed already permitted. I guess I would have to say there, you know what it's like to get up and go in your backyard and have 15 to 20 people sitting 50 yards away, or 50 feet away from you in the other yard? There is absolutely, starting on, usually on Friday about 2:00 on through the evening is when the cars start piling in. We can have anywheres from 10 to 15 cars, we can have anywheres from 10 to who knows how many people coming and going. It's not just, we're not faced with just the renters, we also have people that, visitors that come, especially if it's younger people and there's drinking going on, there is people that come and go quite regularly. It's, it's very difficult for us to use our deck, our deck is right on that side of the house, and you sit out there and, and you have no privacy, all your privacy is gone. We, we've gone for the last number of years with basically very, very little privacy on weekends that it's being used, and that's getting to be quite regularly. A lot of drinking goes on, we have no idea if all of these people are of age or not, because there is a lot of drinking that goes on. Mr. Gross has never been there on a weekend, he has no idea what it's like, because he has never been there. The last item that I want to touch on is the well. We have a shared well, and, and the statement says, "A review of the, of the records does not indicate any additional well information."
One minute remaining.
And I don't know what the records are. Did, did any, did they check with anyone on the well? I will, I'll, I'm done now, and I'll, we'll hit the well a little later on. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to comment on PC 0523?
I'm Brenda Andre. I live at 4212 Fairview Lane. I'm right next to that property. I haven't been there quite two years, so I can't speak to everything else. I didn't know when I was buying the home, what I guessed what I was getting into. I thought I was buying my, sorry, my little piece of paradise. Not next to, basically, a weekend hotel. I didn't know when I bought it, not disclose that he was running one to begin with. I think it would be fair if, people buying homes on the lake don't know this is new, so it's not just on the lake, it could be in anyone's neighborhood, and fair for anybody to know that you can have VRBO or an Airbnb put in next door, because if you pass, if you get all the checkmarks, you can have one put in, any neighborhood. And I don't think that's fair to the neighbors, the residents that live there. I guess that's my biggest piece, is that it's allowed anywhere. And I have to deal with whomever is there, when my family's there, with my grandchildren, and knowing that I have to be very cautious and careful with them when normally I could let them play in my yard. I can't. Someone's got to be constantly on that watching, because I don't know who's next door. Anybody else in the neighborhood I know, not scary to me. I've had people in the yard walking up and down my, my dock, my, up my stairs, I don't know these people, and I understand we're in close proximity, but it's a little scary when you've got four grandkids under the age of six, and yes, we're there with them, but you'd expect them to be able to go in the yard and not have a dog run over to them, or just to be able to play without having somebody else come up to them. That's another piece for me. I guess my main thing is, if you're going to allow these to go in anywhere, it needs to be disclosed to anybody buying a house that man Cato allows this anywhere. That's another big piece to me, because 15 people is a lot of people to me. I'm, I'm one of five in my family, so I understand that, but it's not just families there. That's the other piece. It's not just my little family going on a vacation, it's more than that that are there, because I've seen it in the last year. That's the other piece. It's just bothersome that people aren't made aware that this is there, when I've spent a lot of years trying to get to this place. Now that I'm there, I don't have this all to, the privacy that I want, because I have to deal with basically a hotel next door. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else wishing to comment on PC 0523?
I am Jan Calheim. I live at 4208 Fairview Lane. I'm on the west side of the Gross property, and I have the issue of the well. I have the original well document, it's with my abstract. I contacted the county recorder's office to make copies, and I have those copies for each of you. I want to address the well. When the well was put in by Frank Hatt, he was specific in the well and the use of it. In the well agreement, it states that the successors and assigns intend to build a single-family dwelling. It goes on to say with the next lot, to describe properties to serve two single-family dwellings. It goes on to further describe on number seven, that the right to use water from the subject well is restricted to residential use only, only by the assigned owners of the two lots and their successors. And on number 11, it further goes on to state that upon failure of either lot owner to abide by the commitments of this agreement, or if either well shall be in default of any of these items, herefore, such defaulting party shall then forfeit all rights and privileges provided by this agreement, and the water to the lot of the defaulting party shall be disconnected. I also have a letter from attorney Stephen Fink, and I will read that to you. It is dated March 17th of 2023. It states, it is addressed to us, it states, "I have reviewed the well agreement dated May 16th, 1980, filed with the Blue Earth County Recorder's Office on January 15th of 1981, in Book 260 and on page 849. The agreement is between lots five and six, Block 1, Gurney subdivision, and you are currently the owner of Block 5, and Mr. James Gross or his trust is the owner of Lot 6. The agreement governs the water supply and its use between the two lots. The recitals of the agreement indicate that the parties intend on constructing one single-family dwelling on each lot. That the agreement is to govern the water system intended to serve just single-family dwellings on each lot. Paragraph 7 of the agreement provides that the right to use water from the subject well is restricted to residential purposes only by the undersigned owners of the two lots and their successors, leases, and assigns. From the clear language in the agreement, it states that the use of the well is restricted to residential purposes only and not for a rental. The use of the, Mr. Gross, of his dwelling of a rental property was not contemplated by the well agreement. Accordingly, if Mr. Gross is given a rental permit by the county, I believe you then have no obligation to continue with the agreement and can therefore discontinue his water supply."
One minute remaining.
I will not, there will not be water to the rental unit, to the Gross property from this well. One final statement, please, gentlemen. It says, "A short-term rental is a commercial dwelling where sleeping quarters are furnished in exchange for compensation." A commercial use. A, "commercial" means business. So I have a question. How can you place a business, a commercial, on a single-lane, private road, and that is placed on property ruled, zoned residential? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I have copies of the well agreement, and I have attorney Stephen Fink's letter. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Is there anyone else wishing to comment on PC 0523? Please come up, give your name and address.
My name is Chris Peterson. I live at 13382 Danube Circle in Rosemount, Minnesota. Good morning, commissioners.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I am the daughter of Jerry and Jan Calheim, who are next-door neighbors to Mr. Gross. It has been expressed in prior planning and zoning meetings, both in February and in March, that there were concerns with Mr. Gross and/or the property managers being compliant with the short-term rental ordinance. In fact, only Mr. Gross has been present at the last two planning and zoning meetings, so I question if the property managers have the same understanding of what the short-term rental ordinance requires. In reviewing two of the vacation rental websites, I have found discrepancies with what the board has recommended. I'd like to share those examples with you. I have two handouts that show items from the websites. May I hand these out to you?
Sure.
The first handout is the VRBO website, and on page one of the handout, it states that there is a three-car garage that is not available to renters and will remain locked. This is of significance, because at the March 1st Planning and Zoning Meeting, Mr. Gross was trying to argue that there was room for additional vehicles, and included that there was a three-car garage on the property. When I questioned Mr. Gross at that meeting regarding the garages not being available, he stated that they were open to renters and that was a recent change, yet the website does not reflect this. Page two of the VRBO website states that there is a maximum of overnight guests Page two of the VRBO website states that there is a maximum of overnight guests of 15. However, there is also verbiage stating to message the host for groups larger than 15. Again, on this page, it also notes that the garages are not available to renters. And the same page also notes that there is enough parking for about 10 cars in the driveway. Page three repeats the same information, that there are 10 parking spots for vehicles. The second handout is the Airbnb website. Page two of this handout states that the garages are not available for renters. Page three again repeats the same information regarding the garages. And page three also states that there is free parking on the premises, but does not specify the number of vehicles allowed. These examples illustrate my concerns regarding Mr. Gross's compliance with these regulations. Rather than working with the directives provided to him, Mr. Gross continues to operate in a manner he chooses, just as he did previously in 2017. There were numerous violations involving the DNR and this county. Mr. Gross does not seem to be moving forward with this process in good faith, nor does it seem that he is trying to comply with these regulations. This continued lack of compliance raises concerns that this short-term rental property will not follow the guidelines provided by the county. Thank you for letting me voice my concerns today.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else wishing to comment on PC 0523?
Excuse me. My name is Norman Plouog. I live at 22772602nd Lane, Madison Lake, Minnesota. My daughter and her husband and three of my grandkids live in what they call the Washington House, just up the hill and away from the lake, but it's the same road that they use to go in and out of their house. But I'm afraid of there's going to be a lot more traffic going up and down that single road and they have to use that same road to go up the hill and down the hill past Mr. Gross's property. So like I said, it's going to be more traffic. The kids play with the other neighbor kids up there, which are about the same age, they're all nine and under. So anyway, there's going to be, they ride their bikes on that rail. We walk on that road and like I said, it's only one road that goes up, same road goes down. So like I said, they've been there for 10 years and they put up with the noise too, but they're back a little bit farther with that big farmhouse, but we don't have the, they're not in our, their yard, but they're real close to it. And like I said, they could, we don't, not sure who or where these people are coming from, but like I said, there's some concerns on my daughter's behalf and, yeah, and her family, so that's my concern is, you know, it's all private, 12, 10 years they've been there, it was real nice, but all of a sudden, when that started, the rental unit, it all changed, so. Thank you.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else wishing to comment on PC 0523?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm Susan Reima, Lakeville, 10553166 St. West in Lakeville. I'm the daughter of Jan and Jerry Kalheim. Thank you for the opportunity to share some information with you today. At the March 1st planning and zoning meeting, I tried to share, I brought up the issue of the shared well and I was told that that was a private issue and it couldn't be dealt with by the planning and zoning committee. And I just want to make the statement today to you that I believe this private issue impacts greatly your public decision on whether or not to grant approval of this short-term rental agreement that Mr. Gross is requesting. And furthermore, I believe that the inspection is in error because the inspection was actually seeking private information concerning the well. And it's my opinion that the inspector should have contacted my parents for additional information on the shared well. I believe that the inspection was incomplete because there was not due diligence on getting the information on the well. And if you will just permit me a little bit of time, I would just like to share some information. At the March, at the February 1st planning and zoning meeting, Mr. Gross made the statement that he is a neighbor to those on Fairview Lane, implying that he's a good neighbor. He's part of that small community. And I will quickly share an incident. The first summer that Mr. Gross and his family had the property, I was visiting my parents one weekend with my two dogs, rescue cocker spaniels, and all of us were on the lawn down by the water. Now, my dogs, one of my dogs was not near the property line, was not barking, was not even looking in the direction of the Gross property when all of a sudden a black lab ran over and grabbed my little dog by the neck. Now, my dog weighs about 20 pounds and I'm guessing a lab weighs about 60 pounds. Now, I hollered and I ran towards my dog. Mr. Gross ran over from his yard, pulled his dog off of mine and dragged his dog back to his property. Luckily, my little dog was not physically harmed. Now, my family and I surely thought Mr. Gross would come back over and apologize, ask if my dog was okay, promise an incident like this wouldn't happen again. We got none of these things. I believe this is a fine example of Mr. Gross's concern for his neighbors. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Is there anyone else wishing to comment on PC 0523?
Mr. Gross, Morris Lieutenant, Fairview Lane. The, obviously you can tell the Kalhams and I don't get along very well. It's been that way since I've moved there. We actually moved into the property this spring for three months, so to say, I've never lived there and we did spend the first two summers up there quite a bit. Most of their complaints have to deal with, well, the shared well. The shared well is on our property. He is concerned with the number of people taking showers, yet he uses it to sprinkle his lawn for years and now he's pulling water out of the lake, but they keep claiming I have violations and I guess when John looked it up, I've never had a violation with the DNR, ever, never written up on anything. As far as that 2017 when we dealt with that, Deb James signed off to Aaron stating that we had completed everything, they took pictures of everything. We have no outstanding anything on it. And now they want to revisit that 2017 when I put in the path to my lake for my parents to go, so we could drive down there instead of doing steps. And that got to be a big deal. Jerry keeps bringing up pictures from 2017, 2018. That happened five, six years ago. That's over with. As far as being in violation, I don't have any violations out there. We had a problem, we fixed it, the county signed off on it, they took all the pictures. Nothing has changed since, nothing. And now they're talking, I got to move gravel and all this from the, on somebody else's It's not my, my deal. Anyhow, the property is for sale and I'd like to sell it and they talk about how they have no privacy, but all my guests, Jerry gets to come and visit them all the time. When I have a realtor there, he comes and visits them and tells them all the nice things they tell about today. And I told Jerry, I said, "If you want me to move, I'll move, but you just got to shut up, stay off my property and let the things happen." But he's chose not to do that. And if they didn't want Airbnb, which they obviously don't, they should have said something before I spent $2,000, ran through everything. If you want to outlaw Airbnb, outlaw. I don't care, but don't put me through all the hoops, do all the inspectors. I mean, here's a social worker telling you, a state commercial inspector doesn't know what he's doing. They're telling you that they're going to pull the well on me? The well's on my property. All I have to do is switch the wires over and it runs back on my property. He's not going to take the well away from me. He can't. He moved in after us and he attached to me. I didn't attach to him. That's not how that works. And to say that they don't know what they're doing at the state level and you guys wasted two years putting all this Airbnb stuff together and now they just don't simply want you? That's not fair. Wasn't fair to me. I've got an extra two, three pages of addendums that you guys put on me besides the seven pages of Airbnb stuff I already went through. This isn't fair. A lot of this stuff in here, they're telling me where I can park and how I can park. How am I going to go up there and watch who parks where? I mean, we have a property that can, in the garage or in the parking area alone, because it's nine by 18 is what a parking stall is, you can ask John, I have enough to put 10 cars in that parking lot and there have been. And it tells you right in the Airbnb rules that they have to be in the driveway or in the garage. It tells you that, but then now I'm set, instead of having five or six cars, I'm limited to four cars and a boat. We've had a boat one time.
One minute.
One minute.
They want to put, I can't do any impervious structures and add to the property. I mean, if you look at the addendum, all this stuff is just a repeat of what is already in your rules already, but yet you're singling me out and it's not fair. If you're going to have rules, have one set of rules. To keep moving the goalposts is because some of those people concerned, I get that. But if you've ever been in Airbnb, we charge a thousand a night. People that have a thousand dollars to spend at your place aren't low-life trailer court type people. They're just not. There are people, now are there some young kids and parties sometimes that happen? I'm sure there is. I've been to a lot of Airbnbs and we've had one complaint in five years, one. And then they act like this is going on all the time. There are cops and laws. If they have a problem, call them. If they're breaking the law, call them. If they're not doing what they're supposed to, call the cops. I encourage that. And when they call, Jerry called me and says, "Hey, the cops were there."
Time is up.
Time's up. Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you.
All right. Is there anyone else that would wish to comment on PC 0523?
Can I, can I make another comment?
No. Thank you. Anyone else wishing to comment? All right. At this time, I will entertain a motion.
Do we have time for questions?
Oh, yes, please.
So I know we have one resident, was it Dave Sutterman, and I think all of us got an email from him. Does that get entered in the record or how does that written, that's not read into the record? I don't suppose like a drainage thing, but...
No, I think it's been shared with staff and with the board.
It has been shared with staff and everybody is aware of that, yeah. Thank you. I have another question.
Please.
And maybe it got answered by Mr. Gross. He talked about an inspection and my question was that inspection was by whom? And then it was state commercial inspector was mentioned. Is that, did we inspect that? Who did the inspection?
A Minnesota certified building official.
Okay. And then my other question was on the drainage, talks about damage draining, is that above ground or below ground and is that, was that along the road or are we talking more down towards the lake?
There is no damage.
To address the commissioner's question, it's been expressed that there was a drainage way or a ditch of sorts along Fairview Lane. In review of the past denied variance and the approved after the fact conditional use permit, there were no conditions specific to a drainage system. There was the requirement that all rock be removed east of the driveway and along Fairview Lane. So if that gravel has not been removed and it's impacting the drainage way, that would be a violation.
But the drainage does all above ground, there's no tile. Okay. Thank you.
No, drainage is below ground.
And from your recollection, John, the letter that Mr. Stubbs sent out was in, refresh my memory on the date.
It was, I believe, September of 2018. I'm sorry, I'm not positive on the date.
I think you've told me once before, but...
John did, we got the motion, we had a lot of people talking about the well system. How much has, was that taken in consideration before planning and zoning made there?
With the well system, so staff conducts a standard review for wells that's common among all properties and proposals that come forward. Staff is aware of the private well agreement. Given that members of the public referenced an attorney today, I might want to refer questions related to the well to the county attorney, but it is staff's understanding that the county does not enforce private agreements between two parties.
Staff is correct on that, Mr. Chair. So that's a private matter. All right. Any more comments from the board?
I want to talk more about the occupancy, but we can certainly do that if or when we get a motion on the floor. It's a little easier to amend it or not.
No more comments, I would entertain a motion.
Can't even die for the lack of a second, we can't get a first.
Well, I need to know more information before I'm going to make any kind of motion as far as the rock have the 2017 violations. Are they violations? Have they been taken care of? Haven't they been taken care of? I mean, I can't support doing something if we have actual violations that haven't been corrected yet. And I'm new at this, so I'll...
Yeah, no, and I think...
I just want to make sure then also as we talked about parking and occupancy, I've heard, I've read in our board packet 15, we've talked about up to 43, we talked about four cars, 10 cars. I guess I need more information on that, but my biggest concern right now is the outstanding violations. If there are some, were there some? Were they corrected? If they're not corrected, why not or when will they be corrected?
John, why don't you go over that a little bit? We talked about that at great length at the planning and zoning meetings and we have a condition built in there. Let's maybe refresh that condition and explain that to us again because I want to make sure that is covered. We have SNOW covering ours, we have the issue trying to inspect it at this point, but please.
Yes. So in 2017, there were violations on the property. A variance was denied and a specific condition of that denial was that prior to December 1st, 2017, the rocks in the parking area east of the driveway along Fairview Lane shall be completely removed from the property and the area shall be completely revegetated. There is no other condition referencing the area of note that's been brought forward today. And so based upon the letter sent by county staff stating that the conditions were met and that aerial imagery that we were able to review from April of 2022 did not clearly identify rock within the target area. And based upon correspondence with Mr. Gross, requesting what is the status of this, Mr. Gross stated that it had been addressed. We had the letter from the county stating that it had been addressed, although we have heard that there are concerns related to that. And so staff proposed a condition included within the staff... And so staff proposed a condition included within the staff report that the property would be inspected prior to May 15th of this year and that any observed violations on the property would be brought into compliance by July of this year. Now, there are other conditions included in that denied variance and then also the approved after the fact conditional use permit that reference erosion and revegetation in different areas. Those conditions are perpetual with the property. And so if those are not brought into compliance or things have deteriorated out there, staff would be reviewing those as well.
Thank you. So if they are not brought into compliance, then the permit can be pulled, but it can't be just pulled, we have to go through the legal process to do that, which would mean that we would have to go, it would basically go through the summer before anything was done, correct?
Yeah, we would wanna follow the revocation process.
Which basically will run through September, you know, it doesn't, we all know how fast the court systems work in this, you know, around and it just doesn't go fast. So, I mean, that's what I'm looking at is we're, we can come out and say, yeah, we can revoke this because they're not in compliance, but it really isn't happening this year. Correct?
Well, if you're talking vacation calendar, then I understand your point, yes.
I mean, this is, I mean, coming up on the five months is what you basically in Minnesota have your VRBOs, you know, May through September. I'm sure that we don't have a lot of rentals that happen in December and January, you know, on the river or on the lake. But that's, my concern is, is if, you know, for us to do this, I mean, and if we approve this, and there are violations, is there any bite to being able to come out and say, okay, you violated, you can't rent next week? I don't think there is. You tell me.
Well, to discontinue the use and again, if we want other staff to weigh in on that process, it would require the revocation of the permit, so yes, that's...
Which takes time.
Correct. There's application deadline that would be met by staff and then it would be heard the following month. It is not staff's intent to let the timelines max out if there are violations on the property.
Yeah, we're talking about, Mr. Chair, if I may...
May I? If you wanna talk about the processes, if, let's say scenario, if, if the board were to approve any type of permit under the ordinance, then the process would be to go back to planning and zoning and then come back to the board, which is gonna be much faster, I can tell you right now, than any court action.
Correct. Go ahead, Ken.
And Mr. Chair, and this is a, this is a condition to check something that was already done. So we'd have to come into compliance relatively fast, otherwise we would process the complaints or the violation. The complaint scenario is a little different, that certainly is gonna take the, you're gonna have, you're gonna have authority to make him do things that are supposed to be done already right away. You won't have to bring that back through us, 'cause we're saying right here at this board, if those violations are still there, you need to clean them up. And you've got that till July 1st. Then, but I think the other, the other part is if we have complaints, then that starts another whole process with going through the process of the county board and pulling the county's permit.
Yeah, it would go through a revocation process, a different timetable.
So I, I'm, again, I'm uncomfortable with a lot of the stuff that's listed in this permit, but at the end of the day, it does give us as a county staff some leverage, and I think Pat will attest to this in law enforcement, that we have things in place now, that if things are going wrong, we can start documenting and saying, you're not meeting your permit at this point. We've got some of the conditionals, conditions built in there. Mr. Gross complained 'cause he, we have too many conditions. Well, some of these are because of some other things that have happened in the past and I think it's just to protect us. One being the fact that if, if these other violations aren't repaired, we got the authority to get them repaired. So I'm comfortable with that. And there's several other conditions that I think we've itemized and detailed enough, you know, with the no off-street parking, or no on-street parking, the four cars. I'm just hung up on the 15 occupants. I just think that creates an issue with the larger groups of people on the weekends and might not be able to report it fast enough. How are you gonna get that many people there with four cars? I know you can bring in a bus, whatever the situation. I just have a lot of concerns about the traffic. And this is a very residential area and you have to try to have some conditions in place that would regulate a lot of that stuff, unfortunately.
Go ahead, John.
Just one quick point of clarity. There are no conditions within the proposed, within the proposal that limit the parking to four stalls. This was an observation of staff in evaluating the parking, that four vehicles could be parked on the property in a fashion that would not require them to do a little shell game of back out into the driveway, back forth, back and forth. Four vehicles could be parked on-site without blocking one another easily. And in staff's opinion, four vehicles would accommodate the recommended 15 guests. So that's where the four cars came from.
So we don't actually have a condition saying you can only have four cars, or we do?
We do not have a condition, yeah. Just the requirement that all parking has to be on-site.
Okay. Thanks for that clarification.
So if, do we have any, like in the city of Mankato, and I'm pulling from my past years, a retired Mankato police officer, there's a three-time violations and you revoke the permit. Obviously, again, that, that takes time, but you could have three violations in one weekend and that's happened. I've seen that happen in the city of Mankato. I noticed regularly in my past that it happens more when the owner of the property lives outside of the area, which is the case here. So I'm rather concerned with this. And is that a, but could we put a three-time thing stipulation on this permit?
I think that's not necessarily a policy. Staff has reviewed previously. In my own opinion, I think we'd wanna review for what those standards and maybe there's different levels of violation. If someone parks, you know, incorrect location versus, you know, loud noise, there might be differences in between the types of complaints or violations on the property. I think that's something that we could review in greater detail. But based upon the example of city of Mankato, I think their policy and process probably went through a thorough vetting process and allowed them to come up with answers to a variety of different contingencies that would dictate a violation.
Yeah, obviously, the city's been in the rental process a lot longer than we have. In fact, we're just starting.
Right.
So we're in the learning process. Again, I would entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, let's, can I elaborate on that just a little bit?
Please.
And I would have to refer to the attorney, but I would think we would want that in the policy. We would want that as a condition, correct?
Yes.
You would want that and you'd have to amend the ordinance, would be my recommendation, that would be the intent of the board, so that it applies to everybody.
Everyone.
And we talked about that in detail when we're putting the policy together, but we just never finalized that portion of it, so...
Personally, I'm concerned about the well. I don't know the legal standards. I'm not an attorney. If it's on his property or not on his property, does that make a difference? I don't know. But I, but I, I'm concerned about that. I would, I would feel a lot more comfortable having that cleared up before we make a decision. But...
Mr. Chair and commissioners, you have a recommendation from staff. Well, go ahead, Mr. Commissioner.
I just wanted to touch quick on the 60-day rule. Where are we at with the 60 days?
The county has provided notice to the applicant that we were extending the approval process an additional 60 days. So we do have some more time there.
From this day?
Go ahead.
So...
Previous expiration of 60 days, which was last week.
Okay.
My comment was gonna be, you have a recommendation from the planning commission. You have choices. You can either choose to make a motion to approve, you can make a motion to deny, you can make a motion to approve and then table it for more information. So you have some options, but I think for the debate to continue, I would encourage a motion to be made of some sort to, you know, allow for the debate amongst the board.
And I would agree with that recommendation, Mr. Chair.
I'll move approval.
I would second it, I think, if I, as long as, yeah, it's not the end of the process.
Nope, far from it.
We got a motion. Mark, you got a second?
Yeah.
Got a second? More discussion?
Discussion. So as I see it now, as we look at this, number nine, for number of people is at 15 in the conditions, correct?
Correct.
Number, number five talks about parking. There's no number on parking, but we're being very clear, all parking shall be provided on-site in designated area, none on the lane or in the road right of way. We've talked about this as a small road. We've got other people on there, certainly emergency services and things like that are something we need to be concerned about with traffic. But as I see this, it's very clear that all parking shall be on-site. I'm assuming that means on the VRBOs property, not other properties, correct?
Correct, yes, designated site plan.
Okay. But there's no, we don't talk about number of cars or anything else in these conditions, correct?
Correct.
If for some reason law enforcement is called and there is a age violation, like drinking or something going on, is that a violation of the permit?
I think that would be processed in another fashion, but if staff was made aware, we can make note of it. We don't have a set criteria, again, for types of violations and maybe I would wanna defer at that point to the county attorney.
And I would agree with, with Mr. Considine, you know, things of that nature. Mr. Chair, I think it's important to understand that this has come through a process for a number of years, talking about, because I think everybody in administration, of staff, with the exception of probably Commissioner O'Connor, has received numerous complaints regarding these types of issues. And that's why this was decided to be regulated by this board, by recommendations from staff. So, 'cause I can go back to 2015, when I first took over, I started getting phone calls about these verbals being unregulated in Blue River County. There's nothing that says that a private party couldn't park 20 cars on their property that can't park on the right of way. So I mean, I understand where people are coming from, but at a minimum, the board set forth when they adopted the ordinance to put forth a minimum standard of what should be adhered to. And this was an area that had gone unregulated for years, had no enforcement authority, absent some court actions, that the decision was made not to take at that time. And it was decided to go down this road to try to regulate these types of short-term rentals. And I think that's important for this body to understand, this is why we're in the place that we're in, because we had had numerous complaints for years on various things. And that's what brings us here today.
I understand.
Mr. Chair?
Yes?
So just one clarification, then I'm gonna make some amendments to our motion, but we talked about it, planning and zoning, John, and I believe you said that if the 15 people, the question was asked that if we have a permit for 15 or whatever the number is, that's the people per day. You can't bring in 25 more people during the day, the next day. So it's kind of a maximum capacity of what's gonna be there all the time.
Correct. There was concerns of, you know, family reunions and that kind of stuff.
And if I believe that was, I thought I read that in a condition, or is that part of our policy, or I don't remember where I read it, but...
Both.
Both, okay. We've had a lot of discussion on this and Pat, thank you very much for that, because that is kinda how we got here. And I think this does give us some leverage when we do have to take complaints. Right now, our hands are kinda tied, we can't do a whole lot. We have the conditional use process or the IUP process to work through and the county staff can also weigh in on that. I am not comfortable with the 15 people. I have concerns about it being too dense for the, you know, the parties and the, and just the area of parking. We all know if we get 15 people and you bring 15 cars, ain't all gonna fit in the driveway, gonna park on the street. So I do have some concerns about that and I would be interested in passing this policy with that. I am concerned about not having a number in there for the cars. I was kind of under the assumption we were doing a number, so I'm glad I got that clarified today. So I would, I would rather see a number attached to that, because we can all say we can park on this driveway. But I can tell you what, I can get a lot of cars in a small spot, can have been doing it for a long time. It can, it can get problematic if you start getting too many cars in there and then someone has to get out, now they're parking on the street, I'm gonna go move my car till I'm done, this is gonna be there for a minute, dah 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 dah. It'll be, it'll be problematic. So if we're kinda done with discussion or unless some other commissioners ask more questions, I'm gonna make an amendment.
You go right ahead.
Any other discussion? I would amend that we have no more than 10 people on the property, not including infants, so two years and younger. You know, it complicates things a little bit, but if you have a family coming and they have some small kids, they might be able to get their family there. And I would also make part of that same amendment that we only allow six cars in the driveway as a condition.
Okay, six cars in the driveway or six cars on the property?
Well, it'll fit in the driveway, so let's just, and I think that's the plan, is they're only in the driveway, right? Or according to your plan, you use your same word as you do. That would be one of my amendments. As we have more discussion, I might have more. We gotta try to get to an end here, so... So that's my motion, Mr. Chair. 10 people, max, with...
Six cars, max?
Six cars, max.
I'll second that for discussion.
Motion second on the amendment. Any discussion?
Yeah, I guess I'm, I'm not gonna support that amendment, just for the fact that I think we need to be fair to everybody in the county as we look in that or we'll have other applications. I know we've got another one kind of tied in with a wedding venue in the queue and limiting, you know, I have a hard time doing something on this one and doing something different on this one and that one. I've been to a lot of weddings in my life and sometimes we have more than 10 people that are involved as attendants or bridesmaids and personal attendants and things like that as we maximize. And I guess I don't know if that's sleeping or total occupancy and things like that, but I think that could become problematic. I mean, I'm that guy that only has five cousins on both sides, so family reunions is not a big deal. I can make that happen with limits, but I'd have some concerns with, with the numbers because of those reasons.
Okay, and I'm gonna take a shot at this, John. You help me out if I don't get it right. So this one's, it's getting, there's two different ways to limit it. When they're out in the rural area and under septic system, it's limited by the septic system. So the wedding venue, we'll be having some more discussions about that, because it's not gonna be a big enough number, because it has a septic system and that's restricted. This is on sewer, so we picked the number to get the occupancy by square footage from the Department of Health, I believe. the Department of Health, I believe.
Correct.
So there's, you know, there's a little different animal here, because we're not, if we, if we were doing this by septic system, 10 would probably be the max we would allow in this house if they had a septic system. You know, depends how big the septic system is, but, so it's a little different way of regulating.
You're treating them differently.
Yeah, yeah. We are, we are treating them differently. We certainly are, but we are talking about two different.
You're not talking apples to apples.
We can't, if we could have just said everybody is going to be regulated on a septic system size, that would have been great. But we know that a lot of the lakes have the sewer, so that, so the septic system regulation gets thrown out. And I appreciate John and the staff trying to come up with a number, because we never really did articulate how we were going to do that. And we had a lot of discussion about it, and if I recall, Mr. Anderson, Kurt Anderson, on the Planning and Zoning Board, was very vocal about dialing that in just a little bit more, and look what happened. This is, this is where we're at. So whether we would have zoned in on that, he, he was comfortable with the 15 people. I don't think he liked it, but he's just like, well, this is the way we regulate it. So he did support it. So that's kind of a little backstory on that, Commissioner, if that helps you.
Appreciate that.
Mr. Chair, may I ask Commissioner Brunder a question on his motion or his amendment? I just want to be clear. You know, I've heard 10, but I've also heard older than two years of age.
10. Pat, help me out with that language.
Not including.
Not including.
Not including infants, which was zero to two years old.
All right. I just want to make sure we capture that part of it, that we're actually talking about more than 10 potentially.
Correct. And that was more towards my fact that it's a, if it's a family coming to enjoy the lake and deal with it that way, I'm comfortable with that at this point. And I certainly wouldn't be opposed to looking at a higher number later, but we do have to concern the road.
Well, let's just not go by animal units, like with livestock, and we have to go by weight.
Yeah. How will that look on the applicant?
Any more discussion before a vote on the amendment?
Just a clarification on item five. Was that, what was the proposed language for parking stalls?
Six.
Six, I guess you pick six.
Six cars.
Six parking.
Total.
And that's the extent?
Cars or stalls?
What was your language? I thought we were talking four. At one point, we had up to nine, right? Or was that just suggested?
We believe that nine parking stalls could fit onto the property. Four could exist without encumbering one another, and then the conversation around the garage, that was not included, because that came up later.
Mr. Chairman, if I could just jump in here. Mark Manorfeld with Property and Environmental Resources. Just regarding the amendment, I just want to offer some comments from staff with the limitation of the 10 and the infants, as well as the parking down to six cars. That will be an awful, that will be awfully burdensome to administer that, those regulations. So I just wanted to make the board aware that that will put some burden on staff to receive calls, to monitor those. The Department of Health regulations that came about were a set matrix based on some established language already, and that's why we were recommending the Department of Health number of 15. Obviously, the board's discretion to change it, but with the changing of it to something other than that, that will be difficult for us to administer. Just wanted to share that with you guys.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Where's the difficulty come in, Mark, with the people? The cars, I can understand, but the people, well, what's the difference for counting 16 or 10, or is it the infant thing that's thrown in?
To be quite frank, the occupancy is going to be difficult for us to monitor in general.
So it's not, because I'm changing it to 10, that's the problem. It's no, it's the 15. It doesn't matter what the number is.
The number is going to be difficult in general. Obviously, with infants, that would just add another layer of trying to figure out ages and all those things.
I mean, if you put 15 and they decide to have 25, it's still going to be difficult for somebody to come and count them down. But if you bring it down to 10, it might be easier to notice that there's 20 or 25 people there. In this day and age, when everybody's got a cell phone and everybody can take pictures, you know, it'd be pretty easy to find out if there's a violation or not.
That's very true. It might be easier.
Mr. Chair, so is the infant thing, so it's hanging out? I mean, is that, at least I didn't bring up the non-related part.
I was hoping you weren't going to go there.
Guys weren't me down on that last time.
Personally, I do have some concerns in general about the occupancy and the number and trying to keep that regulated, regardless of the number.
We do, yes.
So whatever you guys are comfortable with the number, I just want to make sure that the understanding of the MDH, there was some standard procedure and where we developed the occupancy based off of that.
Okay.
Any more discussion on the amendment?
And would we repeat the amendment, please?
I have that Commissioner Brunder amends the motion to no more than 10 people on the property, not including infants two years of age and younger, and only allowing six cars in the driveway. Commissioner Peapo seconds.
Any more discussion? All in favor of the amendment? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
No.
I'm no.
Could you call a roll, please?
Commissioner Peapo?
Aye.
Commissioner Brunder?
Aye.
Commissioner Pap?
No.
Commissioner O'Connor?
No.
Chair Steenbergh?
Aye.
So the amendment passes. We'll go back to the main motion. Is any more discussion?
I don't think I have anything else to discuss. I'm just, I will admit, I'm concerned about this permit, and I think we can get this passed. I hope we'll have some policies in place that will help Mr. Gross operate a bigger or better, better operation, and I hope the neighbors can hopefully have some faith in our system, and that if something isn't working, they are certainly welcome to reach out to county staff. Obviously, if it's an emergency, you'll reach out to 911 first, and certainly y'all have my phone number. I'm certainly welcome to take any calls, weekends, nights, to keep a close eye on this operation in the future.
I think we all have a lot of issues with this. Obviously, we've gotten calls from all the neighbors surrounding the area. We all have. Personally, I, I look back at my background, and I understand what a bad rental area is and what, what things can happen. Not saying that's, that's what's happening here, but I, I have that experience in my background of taking care of rental issues.
Mr. Chair, just for a point of clarification, I want to make sure that I moved the motion with the outlines and recommendations by staff.
With the amendment?
Yeah, then the amendment, with, just the original motion that I.
Yep. I think that's, that's, that's always already been done. Concerns I have with not allowing this is that it's going to continue, and we're not going to have any sort of teeth in this. And I think if we do not allow this, a lawsuit could occur, and we'd get, we'd be forced into it. And then we wouldn't have the power to be able to put any, any sort of teeth into this. So that's where I'm at right now. Yes.
Chair, I would, I would agree. We need to have some teeth. I would just ask, and not really amendment or part of this, but part of this talks about prior to May 15th, allowing Blue Earth County to staff to access, review compliance of the conditions, and there are listed any non-compliant issues identified, brought into full compliance. I would just ask a report back to this board on that May 15th, on the, after that May 15th inspection, and then just keeping us updated when compliance is done, or if it is not done by July 1st, 2023.
Okay. Any more discussion? I'm going to ask for a call motion, ask for a call vote.
So I have, Commissioner Brunder has approved the original resolution, and Commissioner Peapo seconded. Would you like a roll call now?
Original resolution has amended. The original resolution has amended. Could you make a call on the motion?
Commissioner Peapo?
Aye.
Commissioner Brunder?
Aye.
Commissioner Pap?
Aye.
Commissioner O'Connor?
Aye.
Chair Steenbergh?
Aye.
It passes with the amendments. Thanks, every, thank you, everybody.
Thank you, everyone.
For your time, and.
You guys don't get to leave yet.
We'll, we'll take a five-minute break. Thank you very much. Would the staff please introduce the next item before the board?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm George Leary with Blue Earth County Planning and Zoning. The request is number PC 09-23. It is a request from Robert and Michelle Schrader for review and approval of an interim use permit to operate a short-term rental unit. The property is zoned agricultural. The property is in part of the southeast quarter of the southwest quarter of Section 3, Lincoln Township. At the Planning Commission, staff presented the staff report. The applicant was present and addressed the Planning Commission. The applicant stated she and her family have a reception facility on the adjacent property, and the proposed short-term rental will provide a lodging place that they can walk to. The applicant is reviewing the possibility of increasing the size of the septic system to accommodate additional guests. A member of the Planning Commission stated they have issues regarding the occupancy of the use being based on the septic capacity. The applicant concurred that the occupancy limit based on the septic system capacity was of concern. Staff provided additional information on the Minnesota rule. Following the discussion, the Planning Commission voted unanimously to forward a recommendation of approval of the request to the county board based on the findings and conditions recommended by staff. The board action is passage of the resolution based on the recommendation of the Planning Commission. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right. At this time, we will open for public comment on PC 09-23. This hearing is being recorded, so please state your name and address for the record, and please limit your comments to five minutes, and that five minutes will be a hard stop. I will ask Mr. Meyer to please keep time and give you a one-minute warning. Is there anyone wishing to comment on PC 09-23? And for the third time, is there anyone wishing to comment on PC 09-23? If not, we will close the public comment portion. And are there any comments from the board?
I'll move approval of the resolution based on the recommendation by the Planning Commission.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Don't want to get the discussion too much more. VRBOs, but this is the one that I was referring to a little earlier. We were talking about the septic usage, and this is regulating it that way. So I appreciate the staff taking some time to look at, you know, what is the output, and is there some other things we can do? And from my understanding, that if they do come up with a different calculation, they won't have to go through the whole process again. So it's based on calculation of usage and whatnot. So I think that staff looking at it, I just want to acknowledge that they're taking the time to do that for us.
Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, the same, and that passes.
That's all we have.
Is that all we have?
Thanks, you guys.
Thank you.
All right. Now, we will go to drainage with Ryan.
Good morning, Ryan.
Good morning, Ryan.
I've got three items, two separate drainage systems. I'll start with number, one is County Ditch 35. There were two bid packages that were let for construction work, two quick memos. Bids for approved improvement construction proportions of County Ditch 35 were solicited by advertising to Mankato Free Press and advertising the trade website. On March 14th, 2023, bid submissions were received for the work. Four contractors submitted bids for the proposed work, and a summary table is provided on your sheet there, or on your screen, excuse me. Kruger Excavation Valverly LLC submitted a lump sum bid of $1,416,045.11. The engineer's cost estimate was $1,518,236.10. Engineer Charles J. Brandl of ISG has recommended approval of Kruger Excavating to perform the work as outlined in the bid awarding documents as provided. We are requesting the Drainage Authority to award the bid to Kruger Excavating Valverly LLC in the amount of $1,416,045.11 for the proposed CD 35 bid package number one.
All right.
So moved?
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Long time coming.
Yeah.
Lot of work.
2019, yes.
And, yeah, the bids weren't pretty nice, so.
Yeah, yep. I can go through that after the second one, if you wish.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, the same, and that passes.
Okay.
You're right. That was a, good to get that one.
Agreed.
Moving.
Bid package two starts off the same. Bids for the approved improvement construction proportions of County Ditch 35 were solicited by advertising to Mankato Free Press and advertisement in the trade website. On March 14th, 2023, bid submissions were received for this work. Two contractors submitted bids for the proposed work. Summary of the bids are provided. Borne Key Construction Incorporated, excuse me, submitted a lump sum bid of $707,840.25 with an engineer's cost estimate of $680,304.10. Engineer Charles J. Brandl of ISG has recommended approval of Borne Key Construction to perform the work as outlined in the bid awarding documents. We are requesting the Drainage Authority to award the bid to Borne Key Construction Incorporated in the amount of $707,000, excuse me, $707,840.25 for the proposed bid package number two. So moved?
Second that.
I got a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. Passes.
Just to note, the total for that project is 4% 100.
Yeah.
Let's see numbers come back up. All right. My last item is County Ditch 36, a violation notice. Quick memo for that. An illegal outlet into County Ditch 36 has been identified and recorded by Blue Earth County Drainage Staff. In September of 2022, a discussion about establishing an outlet for additional unbenefited lands occurred with a private title contractor on behalf of the property owner. During the discussion, it was explained a petition to outlet must be made to comply with drainage law. No petition for outlet has been received by Blue Earth County Drainage Staff. As a result of not properly following 103E drainage statutes, specifically citing 103E 401, use of public drainage system outlet, the provided findings in order shall serve as a formal notice of violation to the landowner. Today, we request the Drainage Authority to approve, excuse me, to approve of drafted findings in order so they may serve the purpose of violation notice to the landowner under Minnesota statute 103E.401 subdivisions seven and eight for unauthorized usage of County Ditch 36 outlet. That's all I have.
Looking for a motion?
I'll move approval.
I'll second it.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Mr. Chair? Go ahead, you go ahead.
Is this 53.83 acres? Is that in the ditch shed?
No, sir.
So it's not?
It's unbenefited, which means it's not in the ditch shed. So the fact that it's being outlanded into whether it's a county ditch or county tile doesn't really matter because it's across the line to be drained by something else or corrects.
Yep. This actually, those 53.83 acres are benefited in another watershed where they meet. They touch each other. And then this instance, they're bringing it from going east. Now we're going west, which is a violation.
So how do those 50, those 53 acres get treated in that until we do a redetermination of benefits on the the original ditch shed where they were paying benefits?
At this, according to citing statute, they can be charged for this usage of outlet in the violation notice. It states that in the subdivisions. Yep.
They'll remove that acreage from that other ditch?
Correct. Yes. Once we get to this point of there is a petition, the viewers would need to be appointed to make a report. Correct. So you'd be taking.
So we still have to go through that process to take the acres out of the other ditch to move them to this ditch?
Yes, Commissioner. And that should have been happening before the actual construction.
Sorry.
Good question.
Any more discussion?
The question I had was, have we talked to them at this point, or is this the first thing they're going to get, or they know that this is happening? More of the.
So my discussions have only been via email with the private tile contractor and on the phone.
Okay. So there won't be a, what's this all about?
Yep. I did ask the tile contractor, please, in my most recent email to provide some information, contact information for this person. None of that has been.
All right. So it's not a secret?
No. And actually, this started back in September. I think going this long is rather lenient. Looking at statute, it's quite stringent. Yep.
Okay. Well, I appreciate you reaching out.
All right.
But I would just add, and that's why, and honestly, I think we do a great job in Blue Earth County as we do redeterminations of benefits because of repairs or improvements or whatever, and have those landowner meetings where we get all the landlord or landowners there and say, hey, if you've got something that's going the other way, let's fix it as part of that process because that didn't happen here because we didn't do an ROB.
Right.
And the other one, I mean, it's.
I'm guessing the reasoning behind why they switched directions is because of a poor outlet.
Yep.
Going to the current.
My point is to that other commissioners, this isn't that uncommon of a thing is to do it and just move it from one ditch shed to the other if that's the most economically and environmentally best way to move the water.
Yep.
Okay. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. Thank you very much.
All right. Have a good day. Thank you.
Thanks, Ryan.
And I would call our chair, Mr. Jeff Wurzel, up and talk about jail nursing hours.
Bring his chief deputy with him.
Yeah. Yeah, you could come up to their.
They like to run in pairs sometimes.
Morning.
Good morning.
So this is to finalize the jail nursing that we talked about the work session last week. We did, at the advice of the county administrator, we did talk with Advanced Healthcare. They did agree to lower the per diem rate. And so I talked with Josie and Bev, the $400,000 that's budgeted for the healthcare, I think they said $350,000, I believe, was was used, but the $50,000 extra is put in for the pre-employment screenings. So I'm not exactly sure because we don't know how many people are going to be screened for employment this year. We're allowed the $50,000, I think, or we budgeted. I think last year we spent $44,000 of it. So the best we could come up with is to prorate it to finish up the rest of the year with 104. Nursing hours is going to be about $165,000 outside of the budget amount, which would come out of reserves.
Now, what's the 104?
104 hours, yes, for all waking hours during the week, and then hopefully getting 24 hours of total coverage on the weekends. We're hoping for the nurse wants to work two 12-hour days.
Nice.
All right. Do we have a motion?
I'll move it.
Second.
And the motion should state.
Oh, I have to state something?
Well, Commissioner, are you recommending the 104 hours and adjusting budgets to accommodate that?
Yes, that's what my notes say. That's what I'm recommending.
All right. Thank you. That's why I wanted to make sure.
Okay.
All right. And a second. Any discussion?
Well, I think the health care of the folks that we have in the jail is huge for us. And along with the care of the jailers that are taking care of them because that's a stressful situation.
It is.
And when you get hired as a jailer, you're not, you don't figure that you're going to be a nurse. And so it's very important to have that that professional in there that does that job. And so you're not taking temperatures and you're not giving out pills and stuff like that as a jailer. I think the the requirement for each position is quite a bit different. And so I really appreciate this, and I appreciate you bringing this up.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Yeah, I would just like to add that your presentation at the work session was very helpful in trying to understand more of that. So thanks for bringing that to us.
Any more discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. Passes. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And you got a little bit of P and Z today, so.
You needed to hear that, too.
You know where you're probably going to get some calls or something. All right. And we'll jump to human services. Mr. Clausen.
Morning, Phil.
Morning, Phil. Morning, Phil.
Morning. Mr. Chair and Commissioners, I have several action items. Some of them are very straightforward, and a couple of them are a little more involved. There is the first one on our list, financial assistance, Blue Earth Taxi. I'm very pleased that we do have this coming to the board's attention for approval just because we've struggled so with transportation providers, and this was one that we weren't sure if they were going to be able to obtain their insurance and all that we needed. And we did get all that from Blue Earth Taxi. It is a continuation of a contract we've had with them. The rates are mandated by the state and will match all the other providers. And the rates from the state have not changed from 2022 to 2023. The term of this contract is April 1st of '23 through December 31st of 2023. Support of housing, another familiar item to the board, Partners for Housing. It is regarding the staff that we help support through levy funds approved by the board. Port Teresa House, welcome in. It's used for a case aid position hired through Partners. Amount is $30,000, as the board has already acted upon, same as the previous year term, January 1st of '23 through December 31st of '23. And Mr. Chair, if I could hold that next item for last and just highlight to the board the task force appointments. Very pleased to say that there's nine new members for our social service task force. I was talking to Jesse Anderson about this, and it's hard to come by these days. It seems like post-COVID, the volunteerism has tanked a little bit. And so here's nine people in everyone's district, at least one in everyone, that are willing to serve. So I won't read those names unless the board would like me to do so, but really good representation of new members for the social service task force. Backing up to the last action item would be the county fee policy. And we do, what we've done historically is provided a summary page for the board to highlight what has changed and also include the full fee policy at the back of the packet. So that's there for reference. There is a, it's entitled Human Service Fee Policy Procedure Manual 2023 Summary of Changes, and the cover page. Obviously, the dates were changed. We did have a switch for Natalia Dan, who was our Mental Health Center Coordinator and has been promoted to the supervisor, which we're very pleased about. It will help us administratively in a lot of other ways. And Nat has done a great job for us. So we're excited about that change. And in here, just a change of title. The page nine reference about administrative fees and spend downs and deductibles, and if the board would tolerate, I mean, also towards the end of the summary page, under social services, item one, you'll see another notation. There are certain rules when there's spend downs or deductibles of what we can apply against those spend down and deductibles are basically chase that money from the individual. And in both of these areas, OBR, which is an assessment we do through the Mental Health Center, and OICC, which is our yellow line payment through medical assistance. So the thing we're very proud of is that we were able to shoehorn our way through the MAMAs with the feds and the state and get this payment. It's not a great rate, but it is a foot-in-the-door approach. And neither of those can we chase the individuals for their spend downs or deductibles. So that's what that, those items are about. And then, and then the one that was a little more involved, most of the narrative here in this summary regarding out-of-home placement and child fees. So there's parental fees that we use a sliding fee for, and child fees have not been front and center. And there was legislation last session where it brought it front and center. My opinion, not being a lawyer, is that the language is subjective. It's hard to determine exactly what some of the words in that means regarding best interest of a child and these child costs. What this is about is that in addition to parents, a child might have unearned income through social security because of a disability, some other, I guess the list is there of adoption assistance, child support, other things that we've historically captured when they go to out-of-home placement because of the cost of out-of-home placement. So it goes against the cost of that person, that child being placed out of home. And so that's been the historical way we've done that. Counties now have really three options, and I will tell you throughout the state of Minnesota, all three options are in play. Some counties have said, we'll continue to do what we're doing. We're not going to change our policy. And so there's some counties that have chosen that. On the other end of the extreme is some counties have said, we're not going to chase kids' money at all if they're in placement, so we'll just pay that directly out of levy. And then the middle option, which I'm bringing to you as a recommendation, but obviously the board would be the final authority on this, is a sliding fee, which is how we do it with the parents, too, using 200% of poverty. So people that are twice beyond the poverty line, that we start a sliding fee at that point, and then goes up from there based on income, combining the child's resources and the parents. And so that's the one that I'm bringing to the board. And I understand that there's this difference throughout the state. The rest of the narrative kind of defines some of those those pieces, and it does include at the end our scale, which shows what I described as 200% in overall poverty, starting to kick in a fee that we would work with the parents to get that information. So that's what I'm recommending to the board as a balance kind of in-between approach. But there's a lot of opinions that could come into matter like this. So those are my action items for each of you. Mr. Chair.
Okay. Looking for any more?
I'll move approval.
I'll second it.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion?
So, Mr. Chair, you had the fee attached here, Phil, or no?
No.
No, okay.
Well.
Schedule?
Last year, what we would have done is taken the child's full fee, so the more aggressive form, like I said, there's kind of those three options. We would take whatever they have and put it against their cost of out-of-home care, which is always a lot. So that was our historical practice. What's being proposed here is that we use a sliding fee, so that we would only do that if their means were not there and it would, you know, harm the child. The question is, does that money go to the parent to continue to make sure that the home is secure so when they come back, that there's a home there and an ability for the parents to continue to support that child. So those are the variables.
And does some of that get paid by an insurance company? Is there insurance for some of that?
It can. And if that would be the case, then obviously we wouldn't chase any of those fees. Yeah. So, yeah, those are all the complexities of that that business side of this equation is how we chase and what we chase. But if there's any insurance company, which some parents have really good insurance that pays for all their placement. And to be honest, depending on how the courts are involved, we might not be involved in those situations at all if it's children's mental health. We have a case right now where the parents are saying, no, we don't really want case management. We're just going to privately place our child. And that's totally their priority.
Yeah. And I think, I think the part I struggle with is that, you know, you have money, so you've got to help take care of your kids. I understand that. But this is something that wasn't a choice of theirs. It's something that happened.
Right.
And so, you know, everybody else that doesn't make enough money gets it all done for free. And, okay, so I work hard and I make some money. I got to pay for it. So, you know, it's, it is a struggle. It's hard to, like taxes.
Right. It's a lot like taxes. And that's the driver for us is we think it should be based on some form of equity would be what I would argue through the sliding fee based on income, the complete package. And then there's the other extremes that we just take everything we can get, or we don't chase at all. Those would be the other two major options.
And with a sliding fee, I mean, you don't want to put someone, someone that might be making a little more money, but still ain't doing really well. Well, now you tack another bill onto them. Now they can't succeed in other areas, and they got to worry, now you guys are chasing them.
Right.
One more thing to have to deal with. So it puts that person, you know, we're, oh, we're finally just getting by. And all of a sudden, this happens with our child, and now the county's coming after them for this bunch of money. And, you know, so I would imagine we work with them, understand their situation. They're in the system. So it wouldn't be a hard, I'm assuming it ain't a hard, you know, you have to pay this. We're going to take you to court. Your next call is going to be from the collection agency.
Right.
Type thing, so.
And we have also a more mitigating formal process of fee waiver, too. So if there's circumstance, especially I'll use one that's kind of an easy one to support, is if there's a medical situation in the home, parent's sick, they have a lot of medical bills, we would look at that as part of this as well. So we have an ability to do that. I will say one of the things we struggle with the most, just from my chair, is getting that engagement for the parents. So if they don't engage us and don't tell us what their circumstance is, we're left without any information. And that, that to me is the worst-case scenario because if they can tell us their story, which really helps us then try to be fair and equitable and not put them in a position where they can't support their family. That is not what our mission is. So we, yeah, want to be humane about that.
And as a parent, if you have the means, you want to do the best you can for your kid. I mean, that's just a normal.
Exactly right.
Reaction. So kid or grandkid.
Exactly. Yes.
That's all I had, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Any more discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Commissioners appreciate that dialogue and help sorting through some complex issues in our practice. These next slides are fairly straightforward coming from the financial assistance unit. There is some complexity under the service in the very last part of this, information on discussion section. We'll get into that where we're at, kind of from that post-COVID emergency status. The first slide is just overall. You'll see our caseloads going up, and that is due to a lot of different factors that roll into this slide, the biggest being healthcare. And so we'll talk about that in more specificity here in a minute. The second slide, cash program trends, you'll see broken out in the key, the different lines that we have that are all different cash programs that support people in different places that they're facing. Trying to make ends meet back to that concept. The first, I'm going to go from the top down, housing supports, which some that have been around a long time refer to as GRH, group residential housing, same difference, but you see that trending up over the past COVID years here somewhat significantly. The next line, Minnesota supplemental aid is cash assistance for people that are also disabled, and that's a pretty flat line. The next one is MFIP, which is our families that are on cash assistance. And the next one after that, general assistance, usually general assistance is used for individuals that are in a facility but also have a lack of resources for daily needs. And so that's usually that. And then the final line is. of resources for daily needs. And so that's usually that. And then the final line is DWP, which stands for Diversionary Work Program. And that program offers us like a four-month window rather than putting somebody on MFP for kind of a long haul. If we believe that the person could be gainfully employed and we can do that in a short period of time, that's what the diversionary work program is for. And so we try to divert from that long-term strategy. This has gone down some only because DWP has kind of taken off the menu, and people were put on MFP during COVID. So there's all these rules. I can't even sit here and tell you them all because I don't know them all. They're very complex, and we have lots of layers. And that's what our financial workers really do for us. The next slide is more specific to the Supplemental Nutrition Assistance Program, food support. And you'll see that that has gone up the last three years, year over year, as well. A lot of reasons for that, that I think we're able to guess at as far as the economy and how people have struggled. The healthcare program slide, the trend line is dramatically up, and that does drive some of that overall caseload graph. Really, the last four years, and 2019 was actually a pretty low bar, but then gone precipitously higher year over year. And that's creating this situation that we're going to talk about in a minute because things have skewed upward in regard, especially to healthcare. Before we do that, the fraud prevention investigation data, you'll see the couple of things that are really important to know when you look at this is the state kind of goal, or what we shoot for, is $3 for our cost to benefit ratio, which is that first column, CBR. And you'll see the definitions here. Some of them you have to kind of look at and make sure we're clear about how the math is done. You'll see that our cost benefit ratio was very high, 2018 through 2020, and then it took a dip. And the reason is, if you look at the far right column, cost of program, our grant went up like doubled. And so when you do the math, it's going to affect our cost benefit ratio because we have more money to spread over those cases. I'm actually quite pleased that it's trending up yet again, though, after we kind of got rebased there. And again, compared to $3, cost benefit ratio, we're still doing quite well. So it's a good picture in that regard. Some of this, we could spend more time. And again, I'm always up for talking at a work session in more detail if any of you would want a deeper dive. But the administrative disqualification part, kind of what we do to try to keep the volume away from Pat's shop, is to try to make a deal with folks when they have a situation where what they've either recorded to us is not accurate, or something has changed, and maybe they got a job and they forgot to tell us that they have income. We can go make that right. And we prefer to do that in kind of a warm and friendly way versus bringing them to court or charging them criminally. So that trend has certainly been there, and I think the bar through Pat's office is obviously quite a bit higher to be able to prove if somebody was, you know, willfully breaking the law as opposed to making a mistake, or sometimes just being sloppy with the information that they owe us. So that's the hard data. The final slides here, in wrapping up, is talking about what they're terming unwinding is the title of what we're doing. And what we're unwinding in a nutshell is, for three years, healthcare has been frozen. If you were eligible for healthcare, you stayed eligible for healthcare through COVID. That was the ruling. That was the way that we were told to proceed through the pandemic emergency, which makes all kinds of sense. What happened during that time, of course, is that people stayed on the healthcare rolls without any kind of justification, meaning did anything change in their income or their home situation, or how many people are in the household, all those factors. And so now we have a very significant cleanup, if you will, or rebooting back to what was the normal way we did this. And we have a year to do that. And so it's a sizable challenge. The Board was very supportive of us with staffing, and this was part of that strategy. And there is, I'll skip to the end of the slides, but there is a bill out there asking for support. The state asked for support during this unwinding for additional resources. And if we get that, it might change our circumstance. What's difficult is even if we get a bag of money, it's hard to find financial workers. We can't just go get new staff because it takes two years to train them and all that that you've heard over the years. So to me, it's probably over time and any other kind of supports, we might be able to use that resource from, if it comes. If it doesn't, we're planning that it won't, hoping for the best, planning for the worst, that kind of a situation, and trying to get through this next year of very increased volume. So let's see. I think we've covered all that. We have the need to then look for verifications in the present day and bring all these cases up to speed and see if they meet criteria. It'll impact 1.5 million Minnesotans, just for us, a big number. And all our departments will be affected. It's nice to say it's a financial assistance issue, but everyone on our caseload is usually tied to some supports, and healthcare is one of the most common ones, as we just saw in the data. We do need the participation, so the enrollees have to give us their information. If they don't, then the next time they come to us, they're going to have to start from scratch, and we want to try to avoid that. So we'd much rather try to update their situation than start over. The breakout of this next slide, I won't go into great detail on, but the couple of the important numbers of our footprint. You'll see Blue River County enrollees, 15,000, almost 16,000. And then there's a couple of categories down to about 12,000. So somewhere between that 12,385 individuals to 50,850 individuals is our target. It's a big number for our staff to try to sort through. The households, if you break down, who's together, 7,700, which, you know, obviously is a different way to look at the scope of the issue, but we do treat each case individually. And then as we look at this, it's our family members as well. It's mom and dad needing to get this right. Our kids who just aged out of, you know, being minors and dependent to young adults, do they have any assistance? And making sure that that word gets out to them, that they need to engage us in this process. The timeline, I would assume, would be quite self-explanatory. It says it starts in April. Our target date, which I guess I've not stated clearly, is July, but what that means is that first cohort will start in April here. So we're at the precipice of letting the clutch out on this and having that year to try to come back to a normal workflow. The next slide, I just highlighted a couple of things for the Board. We do have about 400 new cases that churn through every month, so that's typical. And so you'll see approximately 1,300 renewals will be there, including that other churn as we go through this year. So it's a huge increase in volume. The mailing issue is a big one, and I'm sure we'll all hear about it. We've had other statewide mailings through the pandemic that have gone up, and we have gotten literally boxes and boxes of returned mail because people moved. And I cannot imagine what Hennebitt County looked like. I mean, it's just, because we had just, you know, thousands and thousands of returned mail. So finding people will be a big part of this. You'll see that second to last bullet, our approach is to put this into a project plan focused on improved communications with residents, making sure they know what's coming and that they will engage and communicate with us, and then increased training for the staff. A lot of our staff, actually, if you think about it, haven't been trained up in the healthcare because they, I mean, in the other parts of eligibility for healthcare, because they haven't had to do it. So we have to refresh some of those, and we've had some turnover. They've all gone through the training, but it's a practical side about getting them up to speed and ready for this onslaught. And then I talked about the very last bullet already, that there's hope for some money out there. And if we get that, that would be great, but we're not sure. That's unwinding in a nutshell. It'll be an interesting year.
It'll be an interesting year.
Yes, sir.
So Phil, when you get those returned envelopes, do they notify you of what address they have?
Yeah, we'll chase. I mean, this is obviously within your expertise, is we'll chase any information that they provide to us as far as the forwarding address. We also have, you know, a lot of different systems that we can go into. So we try to do an exhaustive search. I mean, we go with address one.
Yeah.
But then if that comes back, no, we keep digging. And if they give us any information, we will try, absolutely, to try to send any forward address.
If they ever update the system.
Yeah.
Then you could tie into the postal service.
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, this seems like we could, you know, kind of graduate into that automated world where we could do this electronically, which we have, I mean, obviously systems, and you know the Met system, and it's kind of new, but it has glitches in it. We've struggled to have that flow. And then the interface, which you really talked about, seems so far away, even though it is the lay of the land now. So we're quite hurting in those ways, that this is still a very manual kind of exploration. I think you're hitting the nail on the head.
Okay. I remember doing that years ago, so, yeah, I get it.
Mm-hmm.
All right.
Good to see you all. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Phil.
Thanks, Phil.
All right. And we'll jump into administration. Bob?
Mr. Chair and Commissioners, the first item is the County Board minutes for March 7th.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion and a second? Any discussion? In favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. All right.
Next are the bills for the two weeks indicated.
I'll move the bills.
Second.
Got a motion and a second? Any discussion on the bills? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. Passes.
Mr. Chair and Commissioners, item number nine in your packet is the Human Resources Department Agenda. Do have a couple of action items for the Board's consideration today. First being the authorization to initiate recruitment for two waste and recycling technician threes. This is in our Property and Environmental Resources Department. This is a byproduct of our decision to take over operations of the landfill. We initially had planned to have a contract in place for two individuals to be contracted for with our current contracted provider. These would be positions that would be working the face of the landfill in our dozers and compacters. Unfortunately, the vendor has indicated that they're not open to continuing that contract for those positions, and so we're asking the Board to consider authorizing two additional county positions to work that face of the landfill. So I'd be happy to answer any questions the Board might have.
Looking for a motion?
So moved.
Second. Got a motion and a second? Any discussion?
Hi, Mr. Chair. I think the only comment I have is that I was surprised we couldn't find a contractor, but I certainly support this, and I think this is going to work out pretty well. Are we going to try to team them up a little bit with the Highway Department, or haven't we?
At this time, I don't see that likely happening. We actually are talking more in terms of having backup within the landfill.
Okay.
Operations itself. So we'll train up some of those other positions that had previously been authorized.
Okay, perfect.
Is there a possibility of hiring two of the people away from the ones that we've had contract with before?
I think we would certainly be open to applications from individuals that have previously done this work.
It would be nice to see that be used to its fullest potential. We've got that nice building out there. This is, it'd be nice to be able to get some more staff in there and sort out some of that stuff.
Yep.
That's good. If there are employees, they report to us now instead.
Yeah. And there's more of them.
Right.
For less money.
Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. That passes.
All right. The other action item is authorization to initiate recruitment for an Emergency Management Director. This is a recommendation by Sheriff Worsell to have a dedicated Emergency Management Director position. When the sheriff was elected, he did remove that responsibility from the chief deputy where it had previously been placed. In discussion with Sheriff Worsell, we talked about the fact that the Board had previously, as part of the 2023 budget, authorized four additional deputy positions. And so I talked with the sheriff about taking one of those four deputy positions and utilizing it for this dedicated Emergency Management Director position. We did then work with the sheriff to develop a job description, which we shared with our contractor who evaluated the grade. It did come in at a grade one higher than deputy level, so grade seven, as opposed to deputies who are at grade six. And so that's really the reason for bringing it forward for the Board's consideration today, is we don't have a position authorized at grade seven, and so need Board approval for not only the Emergency Management Director role and job description, but then that grade seven requires a budget adjustment as well.
And then we'll fill only the three grade six deputies?
Yes, that was the discussion we had, that we'd be taking one of those four and moving it into this role, leaving three deputy positions.
So only a slight budget impact then for going six to seven?
Correct, yes.
I would make that motion.
I'll second it.
We got a motion and a second? Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. Passes.
Under informational items, we have filled a number of positions, starting with the correctional officer in the jail, an assistant county attorney on our civil and juvenile side in the county attorney's office. We've filled a regional mental health initiative manager position, serving the South Central Community Based Initiative. And then also filled a data support specialist in our Human Services Department, case aide in our financial assistance area of Human Services, another correctional officer in the jail, and a librarian in the library. So HR continues to be busy with hiring, as do the departments, obviously, who are involved in the interviewing process. We did have a lateral transfer of a social worker within the Human Services Department to another social work position. So we've initiated recruitment to backfill that social worker position in the Child and Adult Protection Assessment area. Then we had a few resignations, starting with a couple of correctional officers. So we've initiated recruitment to refill those positions. We had a resignation, well, I think there's a number of these, but starting resignation of a library clerk that's on call. So we've initiated recruitment to refill that position. We had a resignation of a 911 telecommunicator, and so we've initiated recruitment to refill that position. Resignation of a senior account clerk, and we've initiated recruitment to refill that. Resignation of a transport officer, and so we've actually already filled that position. We had a temp that had been hired to fill that position, so that position now is in a permanent filling position. And then, again, resignation of an on-call library clerk, so we've initiated recruitment to refill that position. And then resignation of a librarian, initiated recruitment to refill that. So there's still a lot of activity in the Human Resources area, both comings and goings. And it seems to be the nature of the employment situation in the community. But I'd be happy to answer any questions from the Board on any of those items.
Pretty straightforward. All right, thank you.
All right. Item number 10 in your packet, then, is opioid settlement resolution. The Board is, I'm sure, aware that counties in general have been engaged in a national civil litigation against opioid companies for the opioid crisis that is impacting local governments. Minnesota's Attorney General has signed on to multi-state settlement agreements, but those settlement agreements are still subject to sign-on by local government. So that's why it's coming here before this body. There is a deadline for this particular resolution of April 18th. So by the, based on the number of counties and cities that pass this resolution, does have an impact on the total dollar amount available to be shared with cities and counties. available to be shared with cities and counties. So the more of us that pass this resolution, the better off we all are. AMC has obviously been working this issue along with the attorney general's office in the state of Minnesota. This particular resolution is related to an $18.5 billion nationwide settlement. So there's a lot of money, but we don't know at this point how much of that we will actually see. And so the resolution basically states that Blue Earth County supports and opts into all future multi-state settlement agreements with opioid supply chain participants and that you authorize staff to execute all these agreements that are necessary to benefit from these settlements. So bringing it here for the board's consideration today.
All right.
I'll move approval.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. Passes.
Item number 11 in your packet then is 32 liquor licenses. We have two vendors that have made application, Gato Cycle Club and Prairie Box Saloon. And so these applications have been reviewed by the county attorney and sheriff. And we're bringing it forward here, recommending approval by the county board.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. Passes.
That's all I have for you, Mr. Chair.
That's all you have?
Yes.
All right. Well, then we have our commissioner reports on committees. Let's start with you, Patty.
All righty. The last board meeting, we went to the GMG annual meeting on the 7th, March 7. March 10, I met with Shack staff here. And March 13, the AMC legislative call. March 14, we had a work session in the Park Board. And yesterday, I had a NACO by the call. And that's it.
All right. Kevin?
Since the March 7 board meeting, I too participated in the AMC legislative update work session, Parks meeting, and then the Vernon Center Township annual meeting on the 15th. I, along with Vance, met with the state auditor on the Operation Main Street as we reviewed some of those results. On the 16th was U of M extension for Kip and I. 17th was Goberba Policy Board. And then last night, I attended the Lincoln Park neighborhood meeting. I would bring up that on Friday, March 24, we'll have our 22nd La Sure River One Watershed One Plan meeting. But it will be part of the public hearing in Pemberton at 5 o'clock in the afternoon. This ends our 60-day comment period. We received 59 written comments. So we'll have the public hearing and then go into the official 90-day review. So it's taken a while, but we've now got a document that's getting closer to the end. And we can get into implementation instead of just planning. Calls received since the last meeting, primarily with MFS and the short-term rentals. That ends my report.
Thank you. Kip?
Other than the things that were mentioned, I had a couple of my statewide emergency communication committee meeting, conference calls. Work session was already mentioned. Park banquet, I thought, was very well done, well-attended. So nice to see all them people that help us out. And yesterday, I had my MVA AC meeting. And I will be done being president next month. So they're finally cycling me through there, but looking for a vice chair for that organization. But everything's going really well there. We paid off the building last October, but now we get to replace the roof. So we could spend plenty of money on that. And we got someone helping us out in the Head Start program, internal person that will be moving up to take the role of that eventually, we hope. So that brings me to today.
Mark?
Okay. Yeah, we, like had been said, March 7, we had the Greater Minnesota Growth Annual Meeting. And on the 8th of March, did have a virtual meeting with MICA meeting. And on March 14, we had the county board work session. And then the county parks advisory annual meeting, as Kip mentioned. That was, yeah, that was really good. My wife wants me to do the ravine with wildflowers and stuff. And I've tried that before and it's not easy to do. I might try to get this gentleman to help me somehow. Anyway. And we did have the open house on County 5, on Third Avenue. That was on Friday, last Friday. So that concludes my report, Mr. Chair.
All right. And for my report, after our last meeting, we went to the GMG annual meeting. Within, after that meeting, I had a NACO membership committee meeting. On the 8th, I had a community corrections advisory board. On the 9th, I had a Blue Earth County Library Board meeting. And I had a Highway 169 border executive meeting. We go down to the 13th. I had a TDS ACHF meeting in the morning and then a detox board meeting in the afternoon. We had our county board work session on the 14th. Of course, the parks advisory annual meeting was in the afternoon, our evening. Again, on the 15th, I was in the state auditor's listening session. On the 16th, I had a TDS board meeting. I had a NACO Rural Action Caucus meeting. And that evening, I went to the open house regarding Third Avenue or County Road 5. Yesterday, I had a NACO Arts and Culture Commission meeting. And that's the end of my report. And I would call for a recess.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. We are recessed.